Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Hatfield School Committee March Business Meeting. I'm Kristi Boudreau, Chair of the Hatfield School Committee. And calling us to order tonight, we're going to kick off with public comment. And we open that up via Zoom as well as to anyone who's joined us in person. We welcome folks to come and speak to anything that's on our agenda. Usually try and keep it fairly tight. And we also tend to remind folks when they come to speak, it's not a conversation. It's your chance to speak and share information to us. And it may not be something that we actually have by policy. We don't respond in the meeting in part of public comment. But with that, it doesn't mean that we don't enjoy hearing from you. So if there's anyone, we'll start online. Anyone online would like to make a public comment? Okay, I don't think so. Is there anyone with us in person who would like to make a public comment this evening? Nice to have you with us anyway. Thank you. Good to see you. And with that, we will move on. And anyone who's joined via Zoom has the opportunity to join us through the live streaming on the Hatfield Community YouTube page. And that keeps us from needing to keep Zoom up. Okay. And so with that, we're going to turn to an opportunity to share mission moments. And I think there's been some really compelling mission moments, ways in which our district is showing that we're living up to our goals. Anybody want to kick that off and share? I think I know what you might share. Just a hunch.
I'm just wanting to share that we are so ecstatic that the state took our recommendation and application to actually acknowledge the hard work and dedication of Jean Hobbie as naming her Nurse of the Year for Massachusetts. She is amazing. She is.
Yes. So I was really delighted to see the school's social media put forward the Gazette article that talked about Jean. Thank you for letting the Gazette know about Nurse Jean. And it was really fun to see the community come out and just people from all over the place were like, she's fantastic. And just to a parent, I've never heard anything else about Nurse Jean.
She does not like being the center of attention. And in limelight, she's very begrudgingly accepting this. However, it's everyone you speak to would say it's overdue. And she's very much appreciative and/or acknowledged. I can't think of the word I'm trying to find, but should be receiving that accolade.
Does she get a plaque or what does she get?
That's a great question. There's two different. She's going to be acknowledged at the Nursing Massachusetts Nurses Association. There's a conference that they have every year in May. So she's going to be given an award then. And then also at the Department of Ed, they also will have a ceremony as well. So two different occasions for her and her family to be present to say, woo-hoo, Nurse Jean.
Much deserved.
Very well deserved.
Yes.
Others? I mean, that's gonna, no one's gonna top that. I think it'd be really hard. So if we let it ride on that one mission moment, because that is huge. But if you have others you want to speak up to? Any other mission moments?
I think I can, just one, today, we went to Fish Tails, a restaurant in town. And at the request of my eight-year-old, who insisted we had to go because they were giving part of the proceeds from Mondays to the PTA. And he was excited. Well, kudos to the PTA and Fish Tails for supporting the community and the PTA. And we saw the Mr. Tim, I think, kindergarten teacher singing. Yeah, that was amazing. So all the kids were happy to see the teacher and also help the PTA and the school.
Great community involvement.
And they even got to sing.
Yes.
And danced.
Yep.
Dancing. Any others?
Yeah, I'd like to highlight our anatomy class at Smith Academy, who is, they're really going kind of back into the hands-on experience with some of their, what they're doing. And they were dissecting pigs' eyeballs today. And they had just done sheep's brains like last week. So it was, it's really neat to see them get that into it. They can, you know, they can talk to you about the, I don't know, the retinas and the optic nerves and everything, and they can show it to you. It was very neat to see that.
Is that when you choose to observe? Like you wait till they're dissecting something?
Yeah.
Okay. It's good to know.
Have to do an observation today.
They are juniors and seniors.
Well, we're waiting for an invite.
Whenever you would like to.
Some of us will pass.
Soon they're done.
I just want to give a shout out of appreciation to the Hatfield Teaching Association. It's been really remarkable to work with. So we're still in negotiation season and coming to sort of a close of that. But truly, the sense of community and partnership has been phenomenal, especially in light of what we have heard from other districts. It's a stark contrast. And to see their hearts are where our kids are is really special. So anybody else? We'll go to Fish Tails, talk about teachers. Okay. All righty then. I am tabling the consent agenda and the student report for this evening, which means we get to go straight into the really fun stuff and a presentation from Dr. Driscoll on the Report of Entry Findings. And you'll explain what that is, I know, but.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And so before we jump in, I'd like to reintroduce Terry Thomas. She is my NSIP coach. That's the new Superintendent Induction Program. I got that right.
You did.
Good. And so she's here to kind of give me some feedback on tonight's presentation as well. So you remember, one of the main goals of the new Superintendent Induction Program is an entry plan to compile information, data, and sort of synthesize that into kind of major themes and understandings of where a district is. It's been kind of an interesting process for me, having been in the district prior to the role as superintendent, both at the elementary level and then at the secondary level as building principals, and now in the combined role too. So truly, this, the findings that I'm going to share tonight, I don't think they will come to a surprise to anyone in the room, which is good. They shouldn't be a surprise. And I think it speaks to kind of the openness with which we've been sharing information and kind of the state of affairs here. So with that introduction out of the way, I will, excuse me. Oh, boy. Wrong button. There we go. We'll get started. So just kind of a breakdown of the presentation first. I'm going to go reverse way here. I'll be presenting some of the major themes that have kind of come to light over the last year or so, possible next steps based on those themes and sort of what that means for our strategic planning going forward. As you know, we're in the final year this year of our three-year district improvement plan. So it's actually really kind of perfect timing to look at, look at this and as we head into our strategic planning for the future. So kind of incomplete collection of data that I have reviewed for this. You know, among others, I've conducted interviews with staff and had conversations with them, looked at MCAS, I-rated data, as well as other assessment data, had a lot of conversations with parents, teachers, ESPs, town employees and officials, just folks from the community. I've looked at, we've looked at enrollment trends, curriculum data, student course requests, financial trends and data. So a lot of, a lot of stuff has gone into this. Sort of what I put the most stock in is those conversations that I've had with folks over the last year or so. Because I think you get a lot more from that than just one data point. So we'll dive right into it. We'll start looking at the major themes. So the first, the first major theme that, again, this shouldn't come as a surprise, that has come up is ELA. And I added health curriculum cohesion here too. And I'll talk about that in a second. But primarily, this started with ELA. So over the course of the couple of years, having conversations with folks as well as looking at our, our growth, both I-rated, but particularly ELA, we've seen that our, our growth has been lower than expected, lower than we'd like to see. That has sort of prompted some questions about practice, about what curricula we're using, about whether it's aligned to the most current research. And then also about kind of the cohesion of the curriculum itself. We have a lot of different high-quality elements in the curriculum, but they're not necessarily from the same curriculum. They're, they're, they're good pieces from kind of a lot of different, different areas. And so there has been a lot of interest in looking at what else might be out there and how that might, whether it might benefit us to look and see if there is a program or other resources that we could use as well as training and practice. So we can, we can sort of give our ELA curriculum kind of a injection of adrenaline to get it back up where it belongs. You may recall recently, we switched our math curriculum. When we had, we saw similar things happening in math, and we've seen results from that. We've seen our, our math data start to increase and look better, especially in those grades where we had made that shift. And as that continues, we expect to see that. So it may be that we are looking to do something similar in ELA. The health piece here, there has been some input from community as well as, as well as teachers about where, where we are with our health curriculum. And those, those standards just changed. So this actually, this conversation had started prior to DESI changing and adopting new, new standards for health and PE. So we actually tabled that conversation. Those standards are now out, they're public. And so now, now is also a good time to take a look at those standards, take a look at our resources and say, you know, what, where, where are they strong and where do they, where they need to improve. So that's the curriculum, curriculum theme of the evening. Would you like to do questions as we go along or?
I'm inclined to say yes, folks.
Sure.
Anybody have anything on curriculum? Can you give an example of what will change about or need to change about our PE standards to meet DESI's new?
Yeah.
Kind of broadly?
Broad, broad strokes, they take, so both for health and PE, they take a more, I would say holistic approach to health in general. So the focus in PE, you would find more on kind of, kind of personal health goals. So not necessarily like how to play kickball or building soccer skills in PE class, but how to, you know, how, you know, maybe like individualized, how to, you know, move certain ways, how to maybe increase the number of crunches you can, you can do. So working with students, so you have, you know, less of the ability to, and obviously it's not going to get rid of sports, but really making sure that every student is getting, getting something out of it, not just maybe the kids who like to play floor hockey. So really focusing on that and giving more opportunities for that throughout. So having, having more varied, varied opportunities. And in terms of health, I would say it's more focused on the, kind of the, the whole person. So previously, there's, it's been kind of heavily focused on science, biology. Now there's a lot more focus on social emotional learning, regulation, emotional regulation, that kind of thing, relationship building as, as students go on.
Thank you.
Yeah. The second, the second major theme that has come up is that we have a very, very supportive town and supportive community of our schools. That despite, we, as we have seen, there are some, some vocal critics. But by and large, Hatfield is a incredibly supportive town of the schools and of the school system. So in 2023, you'll remember, there was historic override that was passed that was historic for the town and the region. And we've seen that play out differently in other, in other areas. There's been a lot of support for the movement of sixth grade and trust in the teachers and staff that have kind of put that, put that process forward. In conversations with, with parents and community members, there seems to be this general feeling of excitement about where, where things are and what we're able, what we're able to do, kind of what we're, where we're poised right now. There have been, and this has come up a few times over the last year or so as well, some rumors and untruths that have been shared about kind of the status of our schools. So this is, you know, oftentimes comes in detractors that we'll see largely on social media, but also in conversations that come up about, you know, when I talk to folks, if they've choice to go, chosen to go elsewhere at Smith Academy, a lot of folks will talk about how they feel like we don't, haven't had as much to offer in terms of APs and extracurriculars and elective courses. And they're surprised to learn that, in fact, we do. We have a pretty competitive array of classes that we're able to offer. Questions about the sustainability and cost effectiveness of a municipal town school system versus a, versus a regional school system, which again, we've seen and talked to folks about, that it actually is more, more cost effective. That shouldn't be any, the reason to make any kind of change. So that, you know, that, that continues to be a place where we are, where we're finding to get the correct message out there and the accurate message out there too. But again, by and large, the support that this town has shown, the school systems has been very, has been wonderful. Questions? Okay. The third major theme that we've seen, we presented on this in the past, and you'll see this is kind of a chunk of one of the slides that we had, had presented from the, from in the past, is we have a very strong sense of student belonging and support in our schools. And this, this, I included this particular piece of data here because we, we see it as adults in the schools every day. But this came from the students, how they feel and when they're, what their information that they're presenting. And so to, to see, you know, such high levels of students feeling comfortable, students feeling supported, students feeling that they have built the skills and that their teachers will support them in exercising those skills to deal with conflict is really, really a testament to what our teachers and what our professionals have done and continue to do. Especially when you look at some of the comparisons to the state, you know, you can really see that the impact that our small schools are having and the work of our, our teachers in this setting has been really, really powerful for our students. And that continues to be the case. We'll talk a little bit later about sort of how, how we can continue to harness this feeling in our, in our students and kind of this, where they are to use their voice in expanding and building on what we, what we already have. The next major theme is that we continue to have strong student outcomes. So typically, this is, this is one snapshot, the, kind of the, the table that's down here. But, but as we typically see, we have MCAS results that are either close to or above state averages typically. The I-rated data that we see suggests that our students are moving. So when you look at, when you look at MCAS, you see where students perform on, on one day of the year. And there, there are growth scores too that go with it. But when we look at I-rated, we're really able to see where student A or student B start the year and where they finish the year. And we, we see that our students are moving. We've seen math scores, as I mentioned before, with our new curriculum, the process that we went through, we've seen those scores continue to increase. And we continue to see really high levels of college acceptance rates in, in plans to attend college. So not just kids getting into college, but kids saying, oh, great, I got in, I'm going to go. Those plans continue to be robust. We have a number of students every year who are qualifying with the John, John and Abigail Adams scholarships that they get through, through MCAS performance. And, and we have 100% completion of the Mass Core graduation curriculum. So the, the Mass Core is a set of standards, kind of a level of achievement that the state has set as a high level of achievement for students and for schools to, to say, you know, we expect students to meet this, this standard before they graduate. And we, when we have 100% completion of that with our graduates. Questions on this slide before? Can you? So this is actually major theme four, if you're keeping count, not three. So one thing that's come up kind of repeatedly, and this, and this really has come largely from staff, less so from parents and community members, less so from students, but, but largely, largely from staff. They have mentioned in a number of different settings and conversations, feeling a little bit, what I would say, writerless in the years following the COVID closure. I think that's really important. And it's really not something to take lightly because as, as a district, to me, that means that we need to spend maybe some time identifying where, where we want to go. Because if we are, if we are not, if we don't have that goal in mind, and we don't have that outcome kind of at the front of what we're doing, then we, it's really hard to design strategy to get there. It's really hard to make decisions about where we're going to go if, if there's a feeling of we, we don't know where we're going. So that's, I think, I anticipate that, that playing a major role in our next, our next strategic plan as we build that. And as I said, excuse me, this, this came from conversations with, with staff. And this is at the elementary level, at the secondary level, across subject areas. And it really seems to be a pretty common theme. And in talking with folks about where, where, you know, why they, why they think this, this may be the case, a couple of common things have come up. One has been kind of multiple initiatives, you know, what are, you know, what are, what are we doing? Are there too many things going on at the same time where we're trying to, you know, we're not going as deep as we should into one thing and we're maybe trying to do too many things at the same time? There seems to have been, again, this is an impression, that, that there's a heavy focus on special ed needs and compliance as a focus point. A big, and the last two items here are, have been, they came up the most, I would say, of any. Staff turnover among, among teaching staff, and then also administrative turnover. My second year in the district, I quickly became the most senior administrator in the district in my, in my second year, which, I mean, that, that takes a lot of turnover, a lot of turnover to get there. And so, you know, having stable administration, having stable staffing, you know, I think that will help. But again, I think we need to spend some time as a, as a district re-identifying where we're, where we're headed, where we, where, how we're going to get there. Questions about this one?
My favorite quote on this point is, if you don't know where you're going, any road will do.
Yes. That's a good one.
They don't, they don't all go to the same place.
Another major theme, again, we're off a number here, so this is actually five, that we've seen, and this is a financial theme, is an increase, we've seen increases kind of across the board in a lot of our fixed costs. The special increase, special ed increases in recent years have ballooned. And we are not alone in this, in any sense of the word. This is playing out across the state, playing out across the country, where special ed increase, special ed increases are just kind of through the roof. So this, this slide was actually taken, thank you Kristi for putting this together, from our, from our budget presentation that we recently did to the select board, where you can see in the yellow, those are the year-to-year kind of increases in, in special ed. So since 2022, those have grown and grown and grown, despite us having actually fewer students who are on IAPs since that time. So the services may have increased, but the, the cost associated with those services has significantly increased as well. Questions here?
We'll talk more about this next month.
Absolutely. And then major, the next major theme is declining enrollment. This is no surprise to anyone. This is taken from our DESI data going back from the, the 2021 school year. And we see, we see it decline significantly. I will say, in this section here, we did have a pretty big graduating classroom at Smith Academy, but we've seen that, we've seen that decline continue to go down, although slow. So we are, we're poised, hopefully, to turn the corner this year and bring, bring that enrollment back up. We'd like to get back, certainly back closer to the 400 number.
I want to say it's, if we had two preschools this year, we would be flat. It's like the difference, right? One versus two preschools makes a big difference.
Yeah, I mean, when you're talking 400 students, you know.
Doesn't take a lot.
A few students is, makes, does make a big difference. Okay. So those are the, the major themes as we're, as we're talking. Again, those are.
Can, can we pause for just a second and talk, while declining enrollment is not fun to talk about? I just want to be clear, did, in your listening tour, did you get a sense of why? I mean, part of that is just population, but it's not all population. I mean, there's just fewer kids to come to school. That's.
Yeah. So demographic, demographics, we have fewer kids who are of school age in the region, in the town, in this area. So that's part of it. And the other part of it is, I kind of alluded to earlier, there were a few major themes that came up over and over during the conversation. One was sports, just not having the same offerings for sports at the secondary level. When you, you know, when, when you have a school population of 130, 140 students, you just simply can't field the same number of teams as, as a larger school can. We have taken steps to kind of address that in what we're able to offer, especially with co-ops. We're actually bringing students in this year for baseball and softball to co-op with us because they couldn't field teams at their school either. And we've, we've, we've been able, I think because we're so small to be able, we've been able to partner with other schools where we say, hey, we know, we know Connor really likes to play hockey or volleyball, but we don't, we're not going to field a team. So we're able to work with other schools to develop co-ops where they can play at a varsity level with them. Another theme that I mentioned earlier has been sort of the, the offerings, the extracurriculars as well as the elective courses, specifically around AP courses. And folks have been surprised to find out that we, in fact, do offer quite a few of them. And we have also taken more steps to develop our dual enrollment programs specifically around concurrent enrollment with Vermont State University, which will be rolling out next year. And there seems to be a lot of excitement around that. You know, the, having students able to graduate with a semester of college under their belt, parents at least have been very excited, very excited about the impact that they may, that may have on them. And the last big piece that came out, and this is a less tangible, less tangible pieces, is folks just wanting a larger school environment. And that's something that we, we really can't compete with. You know, I think there are a lot of benefits to having a small school, having, having small schools, having small classes, having a small community. It's tight-knit, folks know each other, they can support each other. It's virtually impossible for someone to be a crack slipper when they, you know, when they have that much attention on them. But there also are, there are some challenges associated when you have, when you have a small community. And for some people, those challenges have been, have manifested in ways that make them look elsewhere. And so we, we've seen that too. So those are really the three major things that have come up. And so as we get into the next steps here, I want to make it clear that this, that I'm not prescribing what we're going to do next. Some of these things are already kind of in the works because, as I mentioned, this isn't, you know, this isn't just this year that we've been, we've been doing this. But, but really, the, the big next step is going to be the last slide, is about developing the strategic plan. In terms of ELA curriculum review and, and health and PE as well, to a slightly lesser extent, just because health and PE are not quite as broad. You have fewer people teaching health and PE. We have developed an ELA curriculum. We have developed an ELA curriculum, we've identified three separate curricula that folks want to take a look at on that committee, and we've reached out to those companies to see if they can come do a demonstration, if we can get some materials to take a look at. So the goal then will be for that committee to identify what specifically are our needs for an ELA curriculum, and where our current program and current resources may be falling short. And then to look at these resources to see if they could either fill those gaps or kind of wholly replace what we have in a way that would be more cohesive. So that work is starting now.
Is that K through 12?
That is, right now, it's K through 8. Yep.
And the timeline for that?
So we're hoping this month to have, to have those resources reviewed by teachers. And then at that point, we'll take a look at if there's a, you know, if there's a heavy recommendation of, hey, everyone on this committee really wants to use this or try this, we may make a recommendation there. Typically, what happens in something like this is that you may have some people with slightly differing opinions, so we might look to pilot. In certain areas, we might like to pilot one or two to see how people like it. But again, that's a process that we'll have to go through with the committee to, you know, really, the worst thing that you can do, from what I've seen, is to, you know, have one meeting and, you know, have a couple of salespeople come and say, you know, here's, here are all the great things that we can do with this curriculum, and make a decision, okay, we're all going to do this next year, without going through the, you know, really vetting, vetting the materials in a way that makes sense for us and utilizes them within our classes, with our resources and our population. So I think to do it right, you know, it may be that the committee has a recommendation for next year. More likely, I think, and again, this is going to depend largely on the committee, more likely, I think, we'll have, we'll have a chance to try some of these materials out.
Is the committee giving input to PD that would go with new curriculum?
They would, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And typically, if you have a new curriculum, there are two kinds of PD that come with it. So there's the, sort of the nuts and bolts PD about, hey, here's how you log in, here's how you access the materials, here's how you find it, here's how your, you know, your students are inventoried, and their data is stored, and how you can, you know, how you can take that data and turn it into goals for a lesson. And then there's the pedagogical instructional PD that goes with it. Hey, here's the philosophy behind why we choose these words, you know, here's why we organize things the way that we do, and here's our teaching strategies that can go along with that. So we would expect, if we made a decision about ELA curriculum, to have both those components as part of the PD plan.
Other questions?
So this theme goes back to, again, well, it goes back to a couple, a couple of the things. So one of them is declining enrollment, the other is showcasing what we can do to keep that public support up, as well as to kind of fight some of those misnomers that exist around not offering as much and sustainability of those pieces. So part of that is to develop new pathways, new relationships with dual enrollment universities, to showcase what's happening in the classes and what we're able to offer. And not just to the students, but also to the parents and families in the community This one has to do with kind of re-establishing that North Star. So this is, this could be quite a longer process, but taking some time to maybe revision where we are and where we're headed. And, you know, and as we develop our strategic plan, to ensure that those pieces, you know, where we want to go and what our goals are, are central to those decisions that we make. Sort of, you know, this comes, teachers know backward design about starting with a goal in mind and then building around that. This is similar to that, you know, where do we want our students, who do we want our students to be, and where do we want them to be when they graduate in 12th grade? How does that trickle all the way down to preschool? And how does that build throughout the years? Looking at special ed costs and resources, this is one of those things that we, we don't have a lot of control, quite frankly, about where, how those costs rise. There are some pieces that we can, you know, we can work on through advocacy, you know, there are a couple of bills in the State House right now, or ideas that may hopefully turn into bills in the State House right now, that can help address this, as they hopefully revise the funding formulas, as they, you know, all those pieces can play a role in that. So that's one thing we can do. And then we can also look at where our priorities as a district are, and what that means for staffing, for programming, so for any decisions that we make, we can, you know, those are what we do have control over. And enrollment, our next step is to get more kits. So we're continuing to look at ways where we, there are two pieces here, we've talked about this a lot over the last couple of years, retaining current students, so trying to get them before they leave and remind them why everything is wonderful where we are. And then also to recruit new students, we've taken steps to do both of those things, and I think that we are in a place where we're starting to see those results coming in. And related to that is we have this element of student support and voice. So this comes back again to the strong sense of student belonging that exists here. So really, looking at our SEL plan that we've been developing, continuing to implement that which supports student belonging, student voice, and then using, now that we have that, you know, that foundation of really kids feeling good in school, I mean, that's what it comes down to, when we have, you know, we have kids that feel good in school, using that to say, okay, great, how, you know, what, where do you want to go? Where do you see yourselves, and how can we support, how can we support that? So we've solicited that input, we've used that input to develop new coursework at Smith Academy, to implement Genius Hour at the elementary, elementary school, to do some of those things, which, you know, you talk about like a kind of a feedback loop, and it turns into that. You know, the more, the more students feel good, and the more ownership and more autonomy they have, then the better they feel. And so it just, you know, that's the kind of feedback loop we like, we want to continue that. And so here, we have a couple of pictures of some of the things that have been effective in doing that. And then our last slide here is about what the real next step is. So those elements that I mentioned before, again, those are probably pieces that will come out in our strategic plan, related to those major themes. But the true goal of an entry report, which is what this is, some of those findings, is to help sort of create a foundation or a springboard for the strategic planning process. So again, that's not us in a room, that's not us in a room that involves stakeholders from, you know, across the, across the community and the schools, to really help identify where, what our priority areas are, how we get there, and then, you know, turn that into school improvement plans at each building as well, which align and can help sort of chart us over the next few years.
So we're making sure that the district improvement plan happens before the school improvement plans?
Yes, which was not the case before, if you recall.
Nope. It's like waiting for DESI.
And I know it was pretty broad, and really, it should be, because this isn't, this isn't looking at the specifics of what we're going to do. This is kind of identifying the broad strokes of, okay, where are we right now? So we can identify where we're going.
Thoughts from the committee? Feedback? I think folks are digesting.
Sure.
I think it was nicely done.
Thank you. You had an audience?
Yep.
And then you didn't. It's okay.
Yeah, it's a lot of information to digest, and, I mean, all what you have spoken of is things we've talked about and know, so obviously, it aligns with what we know and what we have experienced, and also where we would like the district. At least we're in alignment in that.
Yeah. I think the piece that is in here, it's not, it's there, but it's not labeled, and I kind of wonder if we want to, in future time, have some conversations, is about culture and being deliberate, because I think culture really ties into the North Star element. It ties into students feeling like they belong. I have a friend that likes to say, "Culture eats strategy's lunch." It's just like, if you don't have the culture right, there is no strategy that will be successful. And I feel like that's where our district is pivoting in really good ways. But being mindful to that and cultivating that with intention, I think we would see a lot of fruit in that yield, I guess. So I would, I wouldn't be hesitant to look at that and name it.
Sure.
Because I think it's a big piece of all of those things.
Yeah, I agree, not only with our students, but with our community. You had mentioned this, that there was a lot of misinformation out there, and I think if we were closer and we had more events that included the community, maybe we would have more chances of having better communication and better, good information out there.
Yeah.
To our community.
I mean, I think it's individual school cultures, right? Because, and that's about staff retention and how kids feel, and it carries out into that community.
Yeah.
Which, you know, could mean more people at a sporting event, which, to your point, the more people that are around and involved, it's harder to let that, it's harder for people to be misinformed when they're there. Not impossible, but harder.
Harder.
So, that's great. And what's your thought on timing for strategic planning and how that takes shape?
Well, it's already March, and so I think that, you know, soon, you know, we're going to start that process. Ideally, I would like to go into the, into the summer months, even before the summer months, with sort of a core, a core strategic plan for the district, so that we can sort of develop that in the fall, our school improvement plans, over the summer and fall.
Could we see an outline for the plan in just terms of like, who's involved, when that's happening, mapped out at the next meeting? It's a follow-up point.
Yep. It won't be an outline of what the plan is going to be.
No, it's an outline for how we're going to get to the plan.
A plan for the plan.
Yeah, a plan for the plan, got it.
Yeah. So it's, yeah, who's involved, how many meetings are you looking for, general deliverables out of sort of step-by-step, just so that it gets scheduled, and for anything that the committee is involved with, we kind of know it.
We schedule it now.
In advance.
Right. Three years ago, we did it in the summer, but if we know where that's going to fall, we can coordinate.
And the district wasn't driving that, and so we kind of, the committee kind of picked that up.
Correct.
But it didn't allow for more input into the process.
Correct, yeah. And I think having, if we're able to do some of the work, and not every single person has to be necessarily at every single meeting that we do for this, some might be more focused on the elementary level, some might be more focused on administration. But to have a mechanism for input from all stakeholders, I think, is really important. You know, if for nothing else, so that there's some ownership built into the, into the plan via the process of developing the plan.
For sure.
Yeah, I do think that we are in a way different place than we were three years ago, so I'm really excited to see how the strategic planning goes. This is a very different strategic plan this time, and I'm happy about it. I also just wanted to add, this actually, talking about like, you know, being more sort of involved, more cohesive with the town at large, this is actually something that came up a lot in the comprehensive planning meetings for the town, and is part of the town strategic plan for the next, you know, 10 years. And so I think actually involving the comprehensive planning process in this will be great.
Yeah, I think that's perfect.
Yeah, and the town is like currently in the process of, you know, doing those implementation meetings, so actually, I think this aligns really nicely, and we should make sure to include that.
Absolutely.
Administration, other administrators, this is very pertinent to your worlds, do you guys have thoughts to share, observations?
No, like I said, we, this is, these are conversations that we have been having. I mean, a lot of feedback around, when we start having conversations around MCAS, is this notion that it doesn't feel like we have a path that everyone's following when it comes to ELA. Like you said, Hegarty, foundations, I mean, people are on board with certain aspects of phonics and phonemic awareness, but as far as like an actual scope and sequence and things that people can follow, like the math program they currently can do, our staff are saying we need it, so.
Scores agree.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you pulling this up to this month. I think that's really helpful, to see it earlier than later.
Well, thank you.
And with that, we're going to move on to administrative reports. I'm a little, I'm just going to be mindful of the time this evening, because we do have a few votes tonight, and we have an executive session at the end of our evening. Some of these administrative reports are going to show up in other conversations. Is there anything, I'll start with this, is there anything that administration wants to highlight that are coming out of their reports?
I'll do one from the district level first.
Okay.
Just quickly, there's a bit in here that I know you've all read, but I like to highlight our school choice efforts right now, and this information I wrote last week, or I updated it last week, and it's changed since then. We have, we have, I think we have, we're up to 16 confirmed acceptances for next year. We have, I think, 30.
New.
New acceptances.
New acceptances for next year, so new students who have confirmed, yes, I accept my school choice slot that I got in the lottery.
Just wanted to say that right out loud.
Right.
New students.
And that's not preschool, right? That's just choice students, because they're not choice.
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten.
And did those come within the two-week window, or?
Some did.
Do you think that timeframe helped us?
I do think it definitely helped us. A number of them came in when the two-week window was up, and we called them and said, hey, just wanted to check in with you about what's going on, what your plans are, because we're, you know. And so we have, we have those confirmed, we have, I think we're up to 31 applications now for next year, and that doesn't include anything that has come through from our advertising campaign, which we kicked off. So we have, what we get from that, the landing page that our company brings people to, ask them to fill out information, it comes to us, and then we reach out to them directly. We have 15, no, 16 as of this afternoon, additional leads, that's the term that they use, that have come through, through that process. So we're in the process of reaching out to those families, scheduling tours, answering any questions that they have, and pointing them in the direction of the application as well. And that's all, that campaign has only been going on for like two weeks at this point. I think we're just starting our third week right now. So that's been positive, too.
How long does that campaign go with this company?
Through May. Yep. So we're excited about that. I'd like to see those numbers.
That's great.
Absolutely.
I saw Han go up.
Actually, since I originally wrote the report, a couple of things. I do have copies of the draft version of the specialty procedural manual, and I'd be happy to pass those out to folks.
Awesome. You've never seen a happier crowd to get a procedural manual.
Thank you.
Thank you. Look at this.
Adam's not here, so can we just save one for Adam?
Yep.
So we're not going to try and read this to now in the meeting, but.
Look at Adam.
Okay, hold on to Adam's.
And the only other thing I want to mention, Billy, about the TFM report, was since I wrote this, we did get kind of a final draft, but the final draft is not a complete report. It says 21 of 27 pages, so the last six conclusion pages and recommendations are actually missing from that. But it does cover the four points that I actually listed in the report.
So when do you know if you get a waiver on CPAC?
Actually, I have not heard anything back from them yet. We did actually contract with the Federation for Children to supply three trainings that will be this coming month and the month after. That'll meet our alternative requirement for the year, because we don't have an active CPAC in town, so that will probably be considered as part of our waiver, but we have not gotten a response back from them yet.
Anything you're losing sleep about in this?
Only things that I don't have direct control over. People getting certifications on their own, that's something that we've talked to all three staff members about, to make sure that they're aware of what's needed from them. But that's something I don't have direct control over.
Do they have a deadline in which they?
They have a deadline.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, anything in the TFM, they give us a year from the time we receive our final report. So we haven't actually started that begin day yet, but we'll have a year to correct everything that's on there.
And those teachers are actively working to get those certifications.
And their deadline's not a year, I'm guessing?
We'd like, we'd like it to be done by the end of this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Another thing I want to highlight is that, you know, we worked with local and state police on our reunification training, which we've done in the past. And one of the things that, you know, when we're doing this training, is about having this notion of having go bags in every classroom, so every classroom space should have something in which, in the event that we needed to suddenly leave that space, whether it's because we're going to the cafeteria, because parents are going to be picking up kids there, we're going to the church, or to Smith Academy, it's really about grabbing this and having certain items that the state police feels should be in it. Allergy list, parent contact information, decks of cards, or something else to keep kids occupied, flashlights, some basic first aid things. And we have been talking about wanting to get these bags together and have not done so, but we have now ordered all of them, so they will all be ready to do, to be handed out to staff as soon as we get them put together.
Wonderful, awesome. For anyone that might be watching, could you maybe describe what the reunification is?
Yes, absolutely. So in the event that there was some kind of weather situation, or there was a gas leak, some reason why we needed to have parents pick up students either at an alternate place or an alternate location in our school, there is a certain procedure and situation in which we would ask parents to show ID, to let us know who has contact, there's a certain paper trail, there are certain teachers assigned to go, like, retrieve the student. So we have a whole list of things that we would be following, steps and procedures, to ensure that kids who need to get picked up by the adult that's supposed to, does get picked up, and then we have a paper trail. So if someone were to show up and be like, "Hey, I'm still missing my kid," we can be like, "What's the name?" This person picked them up at this time. So all of these forms are provided to us by the state police, they have been using these for years, and we have all of them ready to go. It's just a matter of putting them in one location and bringing them on-site, wherever that happens to be, whether it's someplace else in our building, or whether it's off campus.
Is there a parent side of this education? So in the event there was something, would they know they needed to have an ID, for example, because they wouldn't normally, or where they would pick up in the case of an emergency?
You know, that's actually something we should think about adding to our handbooks, because ultimately, in the case of a situation, an emergency situation, first and foremost, families should wait until we contact them. They shouldn't just suddenly arrive en masse, because what that does is it actually impedes our fire, our police, and our ambulance to get to the school if suddenly parents are showing up at a designated spot, where that could restrict people to get help. But yes, being able to ensure that people have updated their parent contact information, arrive with a picture ID, because all of those are going to be important that they have on them when it comes time for picking up their child.
A number of years ago, we did a drill.
Yes.
And I believe the, for the elementary school to pick up location was the Congregational Church, Main Street. And I don't think one's been done since then, that had to be five, six years ago or more. Do you have plans to perhaps do that kind of drill at regular dismissal time? Because I remember the buses were out on the street for the kids who normally go on the bus, but the parents had to park along Main Street and come up. They were, the kids were separated into different grade levels, I think, so parents had to go to those locations to get their kids. But like you said, there was a lot of parent education that needed to happen for them to follow what the drill was about and know what was expected of them.
I have a high degree of faith in the school side of this.
Yes.
And it could all go terribly awry with the rest of us.
Well, nothing's worse than panicking, thinking that something's happened to your child, you need to get to them immediately.
For sure, because that is the norm, right?
Absolutely.
And I'm betting that the robo-calls and texts are part of the plan, because that would be the other first line.
Yeah, and they've cautioned us to not share too much information, so my question to them, because we did the training, too, is, oh, you know, should I let parents know what the primary, secondary, and tertiary sites are? Perfect, and they said, "Absolutely not." I said, "Don't do that, because if, you know, the goal is to have it orderly, and if you have everyone knowing what the secondary pickup site is, you don't want, you don't want all parents and guardians beating the students and the staff and the buses that might transport them to that location, because then, you know, you're going to be walking students possibly past their parents into a, into a building to have a controlled release. And the whole, the whole point of doing this is to have a controlled release where you can, you can really facilitate the process, and you can, you can ensure that every student is going with someone that they should be going with. And so they, you know, they, they do recommend having trainings where we have, like you said, maybe on a half-day, students getting picked up, but, you know, parents who are picking their students up going through this process, so they learn about it. But not necessarily sharing all of the information contained in those emergency plans.
But sharing, here's how you would hear where to go.
Yes.
Might be kind of cute.
And please don't go where you're not supposed to. Don't head to the school, don't head over here, just stay where.
Yep, you'll be directed there.
And wait until the time and.
That's great. Committee, is there anything in the reports you want to pull out? Okay, so I'm going to fill in very briefly. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. Very quickly, School Finance Subcommittee, the budget process continues, you have stuff in your handouts. Next month will be our big budget hearing, and we will go through everything in depth. So we'll leave it at that, unless you have questions.
The presentation that you gave to the Select Board and FinCom, is that available to all of us yet, or that's going to be our thing?
You're going to get it personally, because we, we haven't heard anything back from that meeting, is obviously they're still going through their, their process, but we'll go through all of that. I'm happy, it's also available if you want to go online and watch it, but it's essentially the presentation we'll give next month as part of the budget hearing.
So the presentation to them went well?
I think so.
Good.
Yeah, so no one suggested that we should ask for less, or to not continue to ask. So that was a good deal. I guess the one little piece I will bring out, because it wasn't so much specific to the budget, but I think people have been wondering the financial impact from national changes that may or may not happen. And so just as a understanding, you know, obviously, there is some national funding to pretty much all schools, I can't imagine a school that would qualify for nothing. On average, in Massachusetts, districts see about 10% of their budget coming from federal funding. Hatfield's budget is just shy of 2%, is federally funded. So while there's nothing to say that we would lose that for next year, even when departments close, that funding might come from somewhere else, but if it were all to go away, that's the scope of that budget loss to us.
Which may be the first time in, in history that Hatfield will have benefited from the formulas that provide that funding.
Indeed. It's our silver lining.
And I use "benefited" very, very, very loosely.
Yes.
Because that's not, that should be, there's no benefit to funding laws.
And we're paying close attention to see what happens with school lunch, because USDA obviously funds so much of what the state provides, so obviously, the state's commitment to free lunches may be changing, but there's no word yet.
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not. It wasn't in the cherry sheet, so there was a shortfall in the cherry sheet. So, but again, how that is determined, if it's short, how that works, we don't know yet. So, more to come. Maybe we will know by next month. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the Policy Subcommittee, but I'm going to note that I think we're, we're looking at some stuff tonight, very much on the front end of this, so there are some things that we needed to take a look at to keep the wheels of commerce going, but the Policy Subcommittee, I don't think you guys have fully reviewed all of this. So we're, you're seeing it with us, just, is that accurate?
I would, go ahead. I would just want to ask Connor, before we fully get into it, the thing for the handbook, we really don't need to vote on that tonight. You just want it in the handbook for this coming fall.
Correct.
Right. So we could hold off on that vote until?
We could hold off on the handbook vote, yes. We should update the policy. There should be a competency determination in the graduation requirements policy, and that has been asked for by the state.
Because we, not that long ago, did update IKF graduation requirements, however, it was like right when, you know, we removed some wording about the MCAS, but now we need to add in additional information about how, in the absence of MCAS as a metric, our own metrics.
So it's silly. I will, I will be the one to say it. Our graduation requirements that we already have had, they fulfill beyond what is required by the state for a competency determination, and we still have to have a competency determination in there, according to the guidance that we've got from DESI and legal. So previously, it was the MCAS, that was the competency determination. If a student passed MCAS in the 10th grade, they were in science in the 9th grade, they were good to go, the state, and the state would give their stamp of approval to graduate, and then they would just have to satisfy the graduation requirements afterwards. Now that MCAS is gone, we have to say, our competency determination is X, Y, and Z for classes. So typically, the way that's been done, and the way that it is, that it exists here, is passing the 10th grade level courses, so English and math in the 10th grade, which, if they can pass those, they should be able to pass the 10th, they should have been able to pass the 10th grade MCAS, which was the CD for that. So we have to have our own competency determination, and after that.
Graduation requirements.
Also have to have graduation requirements, which are beyond the competency determination. So it's redundant, and it's kind of silly that we have to do it. I mean, it's just, it really, it feels like it's just kind of the state saying, "Oh, well, now that MCAS is gone, you still need to show that your students have reached a level of competency, you know, to be able to graduate." Even though our students will, you know, have to have passed all the courses up through and met the MasCor requirements to graduate, which are far beyond what the previous CD was.
Which, truthfully, makes this more confusing.
It does, yeah. It's, we have to, essentially what it means is we have to show that our students who are graduating in the 12th grade, who have shown a higher level of competency, because they have met the MasCor requirements and our graduation requirements, have also met a lower standard in the 10th grade, on their way to becoming 12 graders. And, yeah.
Can you clarify for me how, okay, so like previously, the MCAS was given in the 10th grade. As you said, say a student passed the MCAS, you're like, "Great, stamp of approval," and then you go on, you finish. With these competency determinations that are also at the 10th grade level, do we need to produce information to the state about this, or we just have to have it in our policies?
We need to certify it, to say that these students have met the competency determination.
And we have to send that somewhere?
I believe we will.
I'm just trying to understand the process.
This is still two years out, because of all of our current seniors and current juniors who have already passed the competency determination that existed. So, so we will probably have to send it to the state that says, "Yep, these students have passed it," or, you know, "This student didn't pass English 10, but is enrolled in a credit recovery course," and once, once that student passes, that will have met that competency.
So for this year, this is relevant to the current sophomores?
Correct.
So if I understand this, we are saying, to graduate, you have to have 20 credits in English, which must include a passing grade in English 9 and 10, to show competency?
To show competency, yes, but our students have to take four years of English, so they have to take up through English 4.
Well, so that's, we say they have to have 20 credits in English.
Yep.
Can you get credit for the same class more than once?
No.
Okay. Do you get credits if you fail the course?
No.
Do you get credits if you have more, less than a 65%?
No, that's failing the course.
It seems like there might be some clearer ways to organize the information on the page. For the standpoint of meeting the state requirements, when does this policy need to be approved?
Ideally, as soon as possible, but we could, we could push it out a month.
So could this be our first reading? We can waive a second reading and vote next month?
And for what it's worth, I fully anticipate this kind of harkening back to the COVID era, when they.
We will have an update.
Well, they told, well, they told districts to figure it out and develop the policies all on their own, and as soon as districts did, they say, they came back and said, "Well, this is actually what we want you to have."
I feel like that would be easier. Honestly, like, they obviously are looking for a specific wording, and they're not going to find this, so.
I certainly have looked at this.
But in the interim.
That's not.
In the interim, this is where we are, and I just want to make sure, and we are not the only ones in this boat. This has been like a hot topic on the superintendent's list serve, like, "Hey, what do you This has been like a hot topic on the superintendent's list serve like, hey, what do you what's everyone doing?
The chat is blowing up.
And the language that we have.
I see some tables.
The language that we have in here is pretty much the most common language that that is existing.
I have a few things to say. One, yeah, maybe it's not my perfect style or organization. But in the interest of just getting something on the books and then waiting for DSC, personally, I'm fine with it. Two, the MCAS requirements previously were English and math.
And science in the 9th grade.
And science, yeah. Right, ninth grade science. Is there a reason we have to include like history? And other like, can we just make this as simple as possible?
So
Just just like the because we're already going to hold them to a higher standard for graduation. So for this competency thing, advocate to just make it like as absolute bare bones as we need.
Yep. Yeah, we could do that. So we could eliminate chemistry and and history from there.
I'm I'm fine with it.
Understanding that those would still be required courses for our graduation requirements.
Elsewhere, though, that is said in different parts.
A smile from the state.
There's part of me that sort of feels like this needs to be separate in a little box. It's shaded so that it is not confusing to think that you can just do this and move along the path.
No, I totally.
It's going to get updated.
I agree, but I feel like it's just going to be updated, so I don't want to.
Are you looking to, given that, do we want to change course and approve something for the sake of just calling it done? Or do does the Policy Committee want to spend more time on this?
I don't have a strong preference here.
I don't either.
I mean, I'd say let's come back in April with it with one.
And perhaps they'll have
And maybe we'll have information by then.
Maybe we'll know. Okay. All right, if April won't be too late, then that's fine with me.
Yeah, well, the, you know, I don't think it will be because again, this is for this isn't for our current seniors who are graduating.
Right. It's for these sophomores and whatever DSC decides to do eventually.
Okay.
Meal charge policy, Dr. Driscoll?
Yeah. So this came out, so in addition to the tiered focus monitoring process that we've been going through, our food service, there are a separate kind of similar audit has been happening with our food service requirements. And so the meal charge policy, we were told that basically that it needs to change. So a couple of things to to highlight here. Oh, I meant to, I guess I didn't say. So so the first thing is this free meal programs for Massachusetts students. So basically, we wanted to put something in here that said as of now, school lunches and breakfast are free for Massachusetts students. In the event that that changes, then the meal charge policy below, starting at meal charges and balances would be in effect. The other piece that I'm realizing that that I thought I had had struck out, and I don't know if it's just really faded, but it doesn't look that way, is that under where it says on the back, delinquent accounts and collections, we cannot, it's now against, I believe, against the law to hold participation in extracurricular activities as well as graduation. We can't hold, we can't hold a student back from accessing those arts of their education because of delinquent accounts. So we need to take
Can I just strike that paragraph?
That paragraph out, correct.
I'm on it.
So what are the collection procedures?
We, I mean, we just let them know that they have
We just ask them nicely.
Really, that's
Which is like
Because it says the superintendent shall ensure that they are appropriate and effective collection procedures, so.
While you're striking things?
Yes, I'm on it.
Would there be any appetite for striking that? So in the very last paragraph, that the district will provide regular meals to students, it says, who occasionally forget their money or have a balance below zero. Can we just at a minimum, get rid of occasionally? So the district will provide meals to students who forget their money or have a balance below zero. I just don't like the sound that there might be some reason we wouldn't because it's regularly happening. We're just going to stop feeding children. I have a problem.
Agree.
Thank you.
But then the next sentence says, if a student is without meal money on a consistent basis.
Well, doesn't mean we aren't feeding them at that point. It just means the administration can
Investigate the situation.
See if the family needs help.
And truly, that that might be a place where we talk to them and say, oh, well, we we didn't realize that we we could fill out these free and reduced lunch forms. Or we and and we could, you know, help them through that process.
Yeah. I think at the point that it triggers us to help them respectfully. Maybe this is only me, but the very top of the policy starts with the school committee is committed. It feels like it should be Hatfield Public Schools is committed. It's not the fine of us. It's the district collectively with us, perhaps. And the fact of though, there's a line in the middle of that paragraph that says the food service is a self-supporting entity within the district is not completely accurate.
I'm sorry, I lost.
It says however unpaid meal charges place a large financial burden on the school district.
Yeah, can we just delete this sentence? Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
I'm fine with the whole deletion, but the second half of it is inaccurate. I mean, it
I also don't really want to lead with like coming out families for forgetting their lunch money in the first paragraph.
I would concur. And I think I had one last note. At it. In payments, it talks about notices of low or deficit balances will be sent directly to the parent or guardian. It says via email or regular postal mail. I would very much like to make that email and regular postal mail.
Sure.
If if that is something that food service can live up to. Because the amount of mail that is not getting home.
What have we been doing for parents and guardians? Are we just sticking with guardians?
I think we were just doing guardians. So I was just going to edit that here.
And then there's another parents.
That's right above refunds.
Yeah.
And handbooks discuss online payment options and stuff like that. The policy doesn't need to. Okay. So many.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, more than I thought. I should have just done it the other way.
Policy team, do you guys feel like this is going to be sufficient? Or do you want to have it come? Is it possible to bring it back in April in the same?
Sure.
If and this way you've had committee input.
And edits. I love this.
Just highly efficient. So we'll bring it back in April?
Sure.
Do you want to speak to the accommodating disabilities?
Sure. This was one that came directly from that audit of the food service policies and procedures that we had. And basically, they have requested that we include this. I believe this is a new policy in our kind of in the same section as the anti-discrimination policy, making sure that we have provision for accommodating disabilities in school meal programs. So for students who might have, you know, either severe allergies or dietary restrictions that that we would would make sure that there are provisions in place to support them. And this this is really boilerplate language that came came to us.
It probably has some cleanup required.
Yeah. I'm just reading, it says Cambridge Food and Nutrition.
Yeah. There are, there are a few things here that just don't sound like our district policy at a minimum. So let's bring that back in April. Does that work with you guys?
Sure.
Okay. So school choice seats. With the additional interest, we we wanted to take a look and hear from Dr. Driscoll about obviously, we had to vote through a number of open seats so that we could allow for the February 14th lottery system as needed. And we have an update to that.
Sure. So currently, we have two grade levels where we are either over or at capacity based on what we had voted through before. And we think that we are will could be in a place to expand a little bit. So the first is second grade. Second grade, we had
Just to clarify, that's next year's second grade?
Next year's second grade.
Okay.
So we had voted on one slot and we had three applicants. So we have currently two students on the waiting list who have applied for school choice for second grade. And is Pedro, you can speak to if you think that grade level could accommodate?
I want to pull that up right now. I have my, you said here that there's currently 22 students. I don't
My my notes show that the current size of that class is 31 at 19 locals and 12 choice students. But that doesn't mean that every
It's the current first grade, right?
Yeah.
Yep. So that would put each classroom next year potentially at having 32.
If you add two more, it'll be 34 total.
If no one moves.
Right.
Correct.
Which I'd believe
Be like 17 students in each class, so. I feel like that's reasonable.
I think so, too.
I would say even
Yep.
Desirable?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, so let's let's hear about the second one because we might just do one vote.
So the second, second one is seventh grade. So we have accepted and I believe we voted
The incoming seventh grade?
Incoming seventh, yeah.
We had voted in seven open spots.
Yep. And I believe we have had that many applicants and we have now have more interest in that. So I would, I would advocate for expanding that to 14. So doubling the number of slots we opened for two reasons. The first is that it would, it would allow more students who have applied to get it without us coming back and doing this again. And the second is that I have heard of, there's potentially a few students who may be thinking of leaving in that grade, unfortunately. And so what we discovered last year when we tried to do it is we can't set it based on the number of students that we that we want in the grade, that we have to set a certain number. So that would allow some some wiggle wiggle room there as well. And we've been reaching out to those, you know, those families as well to talk to them about about that decision. But but yeah, I would advocate doubling that number. So opening 14 spots there.
So like an additional seven?
Yeah. And what's the number of we want to target? If there was one slot before for second grade, what's the to have?
How many more do you want?
Four slots, three more?
Three.
Three total? So that would allow us to get through all the students on
You're saying three total, but we opened one. So are you saying two more or three additional?
Yes.
I just wanted to be clear on how many. And do you think with this new campaign and push that there might be more interest in that grade? Or
Right, like is it worth opening four?
That's a question.
You could, because then there'd be two each, right? For us, because there is going to be two next year, so.
Yeah.
I mean, if we open four, that leaves a little room that if we get more, if we get more than four, then sure, we'll come back and vote again, but
We're already at three, so that's
We already have three and that leaves an opening.
Yep.
So I'm looking for a motion to add an additional seven slots to the seventh grade, an additional three slots to the second grade for next year.
So moved.
Any other conversation?
I need to second.
Go middle school.
Is there a second up for that nomination? Thank you, Alon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So you got that?
Wonderful.
It's nice seeing the numbers going back up into the 30s in some of these classes.
Yep. You really want some 10th graders to apply.
Yeah.
It's a hard grade
It is.
To start over. And I understand why.
Yep. We do have an incoming senior next year, someone who knows is moving into town.
Nice.
Which is great. And and I think we've had, I think we're up to two applicants for 11th grade, too.
Go juniors. Okay. So a few years back, the policy team did a lovely job figuring out how we would dispose of surplus items. And tonight, we get to see it come to action. So speak to us about e-waste, please.
So we have been stockpiling e-waste in the Smith Academy Computer Lab now for a number of years. And we need to get it out of there so we can use the space like it should be used. So currently, it's, you know, we have old computers that are, we have everything on that list. Nothing on that list that you have is usable. We had the the one benefit that we had was one student who really liked to take things apart. And you got to like tinker with computer, like motherboards and things like that. It was it was really cool. But none of it's usable. All of it's taking up space. And we would like to get rid of that.
Okay. And where is it going? What is happening to it?
Twin Lakes will be disposing of it with throughout through the proper, you know, they'll go through the recycling.
Channels.
And is there a cost to that? Or we just, they get to take it and go do whatever?
I think a lot of it is able to get recycled in certain ways. And but I don't know if there's a, I don't know if there would be a fee to to any of it. But they would be, they would be the ones that could do it the cheapest of of anyone. You know, we would truthfully, we would, if we didn't have them, we would contract with a company like them to to do it. Simply because we have that volume.
It's part of our contract with them that they take care of this.
Yeah, they, I mean, there may be, if they, if there's fees associated with disposing it, that that may come to us, but
Are they going to bill us? Is that what it is like?
Yeah. If they, but
If you send them a list of what we have?
They are the ones that put this list together.
Okay, would they give you like an approximation price?
They haven't yet, which leads me to believe that it won't be significant. Because they have been very good about saying, and and truthfully, they might just, they might just take it.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to dispose of the surplus items as presented.
I second it.
Any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Enjoy your disposal.
Wonderful to have that space back.
And so I'm looking to entertain a motion to go into executive session with no intent to return pursuant to master general law, chapter 38, section 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining.
So moved.
And this will be a And this will be a second, and then a roll call?
Sure.
Thank you, Becca.
Boudreaux, aye?
Inglehart, aye?
Benj, aye?
Green, aye?
Thank you much. Thank you, John.
John, thank you very much. Looks, it's impressive.